I'm going to call this meeting to order.
Thank you. Vice President.
Roll call.
Mrs. Carrier?
Here.
Mr. Levy?
Here.
Mr. Methman?
Here.
Mr. Vedder?
Here.
And Mrs. Mazner?
Absent.
Pledge of Allegiance, we all stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to all of our visitors. And we have Baron Graber up first. If you would like to grab a microphone and turn it on, we'd appreciate it.
I don't know if I would. So, hi, I'm Baron Graber, obviously. I'm a senior. And since, well, starting last year, at the end of last year, Coach Moore, our wrestling head coach emailed all of the senior wrestlers about his senior projects, whether it be becoming a wrestling official or building a podium like I have. I took advantage of building the podium, and I know a couple of the other kids are becoming officials. And this is my speech on donating my project to the school. It's taken a couple of weeks to build, from cutting the wood, painting, priming, and finishing up last night at about 10 o'clock, getting the final touches on it so I could get pictures, which Mom helped me with. Just got the pictures in my truck at 5:00. So it's...
Pass those pictures around.
I do have some, yes, sorry, I'll pass the pictures around. It's about a 28-inch by 28-inch board on top. It's painted red. There's carpet on the bottom so that we don't scratch the basketball floor, which we had scratched it last year or two years ago with one of the buckles on the mats, and that was not good.
So it's Bassett-approved?
I hope so.
Okay, alright.
I hope so. I really just made it to whatever Coach Moore wanted. I made it three different pieces so that way it could be stored easily. And hopefully, most of us will get a stand on it this year at our first meet.
So what did we use before?
Those boxes that you jump on in the weight room. We used a 12, 18, and 24-inch, whichever how tall those are, but those hopefully will last longer.
Well, these look awesome. Thank you so much for your donation.
Yeah, the graphics are awesome.
They are. We really appreciate it. Thank you so much. Any other comments or questions?
No, nice work.
It's good.
Good work.
You're welcome to stay, Baron, if you want.
I'm good, I'll stay.
If you don't want to, it's okay. We appreciate you doing that for us. Thank you.
And next up, we have the Science Department with an NSTA conference.
Okay, so I'm Emily Reese. I teach something in grade five and secondary.
I'm Kaitlin Yals. I teach children's science.
I'm Kathy Liny. I teach high school life sciences.
And I'm Paul Payne. I taught some of you, but I teach high school physical science.
Try to teach.
And most of your children.
So we're here today to share with you our professional development experience that we had a couple of weeks back in New Orleans, where we attended the National Science Teaching Association National Fall Conference. So for those of you not familiar with NSTA, it's really the National Organization for Science Education here in the U.S. Their biggest focus is professional development for science educators. So they hold large conferences each year. Personally, I think this is my seventh that I've been to. They're phenomenal opportunities for us, where thousands of teachers get together at one time, where we can partner with both them and then private organizations, government organizations, for different sessions. Speaking of those sessions, there were a lot of different sessions that we could choose from. It was honestly a little bit overwhelming. But some of those different strands of sessions that were at the conference were STEM Haven, Tech Tools, Students in Safety Thinking, Curriculum Assessment, and Research Practice. So while at those sessions, we were able to really engage with some innovative science. So this is me, obviously. At this session, we were able to do a lot of different hands-on activities, all about the solar system, which is great because that's a big chunk of the degree science. So in this picture, I'm holding a comet that we made out of dry ice, dust, dirt, that sort of thing. Up here is one of the sessions I believe that we went to. Oh, well, sorry. And it was about the production currents, like in the ocean, so they were actually like that. And then we also got really great ideas about differentiation, as well as claimed evidence and reasoning, which is really important for critical thinking in science. And Kathy, that was my presentation.
Yes, and there was quite a few focusing in on English learning. English language learners in science especially, where, you know, they're already learning all the English, but then having to learn science on top of it and have to... And that's my personal professional goal this year, is my community is working with my ELL kids to make science as accessible as possible. So that was a focus on that. And there were just, you could really choose which area that you wanted to focus on. I was looking for ways to kind of redo some of my areas of focus in biology and also to pick up some environmental science labs. There are a few things in anatomy that...
So this is some of the other sessions that we attended. This one here on the left is one that Kathy and I attended together. So we both have a strong background in life science, so we tend to gravitate more toward those kinds of sessions. So this is one that a teacher actually organized, and she was a teacher in New Orleans. She was trying to teach her students genetic drift. Using Kinkit babies. So these are apparently in drawers in New Orleans. They have lots of jars with the Kinkit babies. I don't know.
Because they give the Kinkits for Mardi Gras. I like them, Mardi Gras.
So she's using the different colors to show how gene frequency changed over time. And then I always like to brush up on skills that I haven't used in a while, so I did a sheep heart inspection when I was there, and then Kathy also did some kind of change.
Yeah, I kind of wanted, I mean, I have a kind of change coming up here, or next week, actually. And I wanted to find something that didn't just make the kids all sad that it negated them. And so I was able to attend several different kind of change things that brought some really interesting ideas and focusing more on the positive, you know, of what they can do to make things better. Not go, you don't need that carbon footprint to develop positive sides, which is what I wanted to do.
And then one of the biggest ones that I walked away with is this one. I wanted to assist gel electric grease. So Kathy and I start teaching students about tree parasites, and then she takes it over in biology. And so this is actually a tool that, less than 20 years ago, when I was a student at William, we didn't have our hands-on. It was too expensive, too bulky. But now there's a point where it costs just a few hundred dollars, and our students can actually run DNA through these gels, actually separate to different wheels. And then in this case, it was for different paternity for litter puppies. But we can also use them to look at, like, from an ecology perspective, where can we put these lions that they are trying to increase their population and then put them back into Africa, where they rest bitch and have weight.
Yeah, there's a lot, we're in the course test for biology that has, that were, it's not just a who done it or DNA thing, you know, whose child is it. They always backdoor in some weird way where they pull this electric grease versus idea in. And so how do you really start a background in that?
And then this is another picture from the... She cried, she was very excited about that one. And then these files here actually have algae in them. And so it can show, like, how your aspiration and where some of this algae going through those processes by the color of liquid that is in, changing this color as we go through one process versus the other, which is really interesting. And then we're also being able to get some kits, ideas that could help us with our different lessons, and a website about virtual literature and web design that we're a lot of great special. We had to experience some good Norman's music while we were down there. But also, basically, seven sessions in total, and that was about 65 hours of different stuff. And really, these are, there's really only one overlap between Kathy and I. So these are 70 different sessions. So at dinner every night, we were always collaborating and sharing what we had. And you've just seen over here, a few minutes ago, we were talking again about a different session. So really, 70 different activities we brought up.
Now, I don't have any pictures, so that's why I have these slides up here. But my goal going to NSTA this year was, you know, I've been teaching for 34 years now. I'm not interested in reinventing the wheel, but I am interested in how I can better engage students. So that's what I really focused on. And I came up with some really cool ideas, some that I've already used already. One of them I went to is using memes, which kids are big into memes right now. Using memes to assess and review. And I actually used it for the first time today in one of my classes, and they loved it. Now, as in always, you get some really good ones and some that are, eh, whatever. But it's another way for them to be able to engage in and think about that. I brought home a bunch of board games for chemistry review. I've learned new ways to use cell phones in the classroom. And cell phones are here, we've got to deal with them, and new ways to use them in the science classroom. Don't forget, I wrote some stuff down. Oh, yes. Tomorrow, I'm starting a, with my Chem II kids, I'm starting a lab that I picked up there. It's production of soda. So they're going to make their own formulation of either a cola or a lemon lime soda. And they're going to figure out the best combinations, and then you can calculate malaria, stenometry, all that stuff and that. Because that's what really, I mean, people who produce that or chemists do that. That's a real job, so. I will, I'm there. And one other thing I picked up is I went through a number of things on differentiation, which is, for me, has always been sort of tough. But I picked up some new ideas I'm already implementing in the classroom. Does take more paper, Mr. Ruin, but it's alright. And then, and on the last day, we also...
Whatever necessary.
Carolina Scientific has a drawing at the end. And I was the last one to win something. I won some lizards, I guess, that I won.
I know. Why do you have to help keep them home? I thought I could stick them in the...
And I'm like, any local people want these things? And I thought I'd be emboldened by a bunch of women who wanted these lizards. But I ended up trading them for a $400 hot plate stirrer, which is now on the chemistry room, so.
Actually, we all took extra cakes that we brought back and freeze up. Because all these big companies and government agencies and that are all there share what they have. And so we all voted up on the cookies that we brought back.
Yep, I thought it was...
We were changing after, Kathy.
Don't let it negotiate every day.
They weren't going to make it on the plate.
So like we kind of already mentioned, we came back with so many different resources. I know that personally, I already implemented one of the things from my original time in the session. So if we were more organized, was the goal. Inspiration, not only with the projects and activities, but also just to be more highly educated in general. And we're also able to practice the skills that we certainly have in our mission. And one of the things that we came up with about is that a group of teachers coming together at one time, so they're now working there, is incredible. I have contacts for a teacher named Barbara Lomine. She's going to be working with me and my seventh grade student to help teach some ocean currents, because ocean currents in Ohio, it's not something that seventh graders really understand. But with a person who lives right along the ocean, it's something that we want to collaborate with. And I was also able to work with a geophysicist at one of my sessions, help me better understand how atom particles are actually hardened in the C4 and how scientists can actually visualize them. Something that my eighth graders and I always struggled to understand, how they actually see the atom. So as you can tell, we worked a lot of camaraderie. We ate dinner together every night. We investigated what tree we were walking by together. Randomly spotted a tree, and we all got our phones out trying to figure out what tree we were walking by. And of course, we're excited to come back. And you can tell we've already brought back different lessons with our students, different energy with our students. But I think that really speaks for the freedom of up here, from... It really speaks to, like, what we can do with our students. So we love what we do, I think I can frankly say for myself. We enjoy what we do. And professional development like this, well, thanks to Mr. Ruin. It allows us to bring back a lot of goodies to our students and to show them what we can do in that. So we appreciate you.
I mean, I keep saying we're going both for ourselves and the kids, as far as really keeping things and activating with the skills and the...
I had a teacher in LA who was still, she asked me how everything to achieve. And I haven't answered that, because I don't know how. I don't know how to explain it to her. I mean, it's a gut, and if we are, it's what we're passionate about. It's not some, like, one get a book that we use and then call the resources that we pulled together from all these...
I have a whole bag I'm going to send with you, because I went to Capitol Conference, and like, half of the vendors there were all about science and steam. And so I came back with a whole bag of goodies, because they had some awesome stuff down there. And I was very excited for what we were able to do. So this worked out perfectly, and I'm so excited to be here and enjoyed it and came back with such good things.
You can tell you're excited, and thank you for saying that you're passionate about what you do, because that's a statement about all of our teachers here, and that's why our scores are what they are. It's not just the Science Department, it's across the board, all the way through. And, you know, a lot of the things that you guys do, not just in the Science Department, but everywhere, is develop a lot of your own curriculum by going and learning at places like this. So thank you for being so passionate about your job and doing such a great job. We really appreciate you.
Thank you.
That's right.
How's it getting beat up?
We talked about that before. It used to be where you'd spend like, you know, 60, 70 thousand dollars for a reading program for so many years, and we don't do that anymore because I just developed your own.
I've bought one since 15 years.
Yeah, yeah. Well, thank you.
So it's going to be hard to follow up?
Yeah.
Our reports are not exciting.
Show the passion.
Sure, I'll go first. Well, I will say though, the first thing that I'm going to talk about was exciting, our Veterans Day program that we had on November 11th. We had over 100 veterans that we were able to come on that day. And we had a variety of individuals behind the scenes that helped make that day very memorable, inside and outside of school. But I'd like to acknowledge just a few of our community members. Zane Zedike, Greg Brown, helped to put all the flags from the main event entrance that surrounded the main event parking lot. Our fire chief, Derek Crockett, put a fire truck and a huge American flag that he just perfectly placed in our parking lot. I mean, I just, I mean, I could see it from 18 coming in and instantly was gone. Colleen Richter and the Peacemakers of America. Every year they made up quilt, and we did a little tour of that in attendance. This year, I mean, the stitching was just beautiful. I mean, it just, it was breathtaking. Mitchell Leatherman for coming in with his drone taking the day off, that morning off of work to just capture the program at all different angles. And then lastly, Erin McDonnelly would promote 419, putting together just a really beautiful slideshow. It is on our social media, so if you haven't had an opportunity to check it out, you can have used the content that we use through the program and then splice pictures from the actual program with that in. So it was just a wonderful day. So we did have some elementary, I can't talk either, elementary music programs. On November 14th, our 3rd and 4th grade students performed. And there are actually, some of them are getting ready for a new science choir performance on December 12th that we are going to invite up to 14 community members to be able to come in. Also, perform it for our elementary kiddos so they can see what a science choir looks like. And then invite their guests to lunch. So that is pretty neat, so more information will follow.
Before I get going on the middle school, I just want to kind of jump off what Mr. Countryman said about our teachers. When Ms. Reese kind of pitched the idea to go to this conference, Mr. Highlander and I wanted to make sure we were appropriate school of what we were sending them down there for. And that was a silly thing to do with Ms. Reese, because she came back with about a million different things of why they were going to do this. But I think it speaks to, like Mr. Countryman, you said, not just the science teacher, but all of our teachers. We have such high expectations for our students, and our teachers truly have high expectations for them. But they have high expectations for themselves, too. And they are never content. They are always looking for the next best thing. And I think this is an example of, just a small example, of how that goes on here. So I just wanted to mention that and how proud we are of them, and that was a great presentation. Our middle school, we recently had our first quarter incentive days. Students were able to earn these based on good grades, good behavior, and good attendance. Our 5th graders had a game day. They've done this in the past, and it's always been a hit, where students bring their own board games in. They're allowed to bring their own in, and they get with their buddies in the afternoon, and they play a bunch of different board games, and they just absolutely love it. They had a great time. Our 6th graders had a candy casino. Not too much betting was going on. They were just playing games for candy. But they also had a really great time. And then our 7th and 8th graders had a Halloween-themed movie trip to the Bryan Movie Theater. They dressed up, they had costume contests, and they were able to watch a movie and get snacks, popcorn and drinks and all that fun stuff, and they had a really, really great time, too. I want to say a big thank you to Jim and Karen Schmidt for sponsoring that movie trip. They had just an outstanding time. We're excited for our junior high winter sports seasons to begin. Seasons are actually already underway. Just came from our first girls' home game that's going on actually right now. Our first boys' home game is going to be December 5th. And our first home wrestling meet is going to be December 19th. So we're excited for all that to get going. And then the only other thing in the middle school is our middle school spelling bee will be tomorrow morning at 8:05. So we actually have 24 students, grades 5 through 8, that are going to compete. Each grade level had a mini-competition in their classes. So we have six individuals from 5th grade, 6th grade, 7th and 8th that are going to participate in the day competition tomorrow. The winner will then move on to the county and regional spelling bees later in January and March. So we're excited about that tomorrow morning. Alright, on the high school side of things for Mr. Highlander. Basketball season is officially underway here in the high school. The girls have their first game this past Saturday at Marshall. The girls are limited in numbers this year and will be playing varsity-only contests. The boys will host Fairview this Friday at home for their first game of the season. Within the wrestling program, the boys will kick off their season with the Hicksville Invitational on Saturday, December 7th. And the girls will be at Defiance on December 7th also for their first term. On Thursday, December 5th, our sophomores will be spending the day exploring their future educational opportunities, excuse me, in the world of career tech. They will begin the day traveling to Ford County to explore the opportunities that they offer there. And then in the afternoon, they will explore our Hicksville Ag program. They're going to hear from current juniors and seniors, as well as local employees that our work release students are working with, to learn about the experiences and opportunities that are offered here at Hicksville as well. A note finally for high school about the ACT test for our juniors. The ACT prep coursework has been going well during the home base periods on Tuesdays and Thursdays. We currently have 36 juniors participating. This year, the ACT, which will be administered on March 11th, is optional for students. Mrs. Wyman has mailed an opt-out form to parents that must be completed and returned if their student does not wish to take the ACT. And these forms are due in the high school office by December 6th, if they wish to opt out. And that's all we have for the middle school and high school.
Okay, I do want to give a big shout-out about the Veterans Day at Dudley and everything that goes along with that, too. This is Kaufman here. She puts a lot of work into that. She will not, you know, let anybody know this, but she spends a lot of hours staying high. And she did a great job organizing that. So I just wanted to give her a big shout-out, so she does great with those things and that does set a lot of things, and it was beautiful at Dudley. So thank you, Kaufman, for that.
And then at the end of October, our district intervention specialists and I are going to have a day collaborating on something that I wanted to start this year, to have periodic collaboration or time with the intervention staff. There are some updates from the state that I wanted to communicate with all the intervention specialists about report cards, compliance, confidentiality when it comes to students on IEPs. We talked at length about co-teaching, co-planning, and along with strategies to further improve our intervention department. My key focus here at Hicksville has been on enhancing our co-teaching practices. Grades K to 12, but 1 to 12 is where we do our co-teaching in the class. Our intervention specialists were alongside general education teachers daily in the general education classroom, providing instruction for a different co-teaching model. This collaboration model benefits not just those on IEPs, but all students. And something that Mr. Payne said during his presentation just made my heart so happy was differentiation. That's what we went for, something that we've really worked on. Even through the co-teaching part of things, we work on how to differentiate with all of our students, no matter where they're at. If they are gifted and talented, they're up here, we differentiate to meet their needs, all the way to our students who are at high school. So just to hear that, just shows what we're putting into our students all the way back. So implementing the co-teaching has our expert teachers teaching the content while our intervention specialists are coming alongside and supporting them in the class as well. So it does help not just those on IEPs, but those, not on IEPs, it gives you those small groups or just more one-on-one time with a teacher. It's greatly improved our students on IEPs with academic skills because they're hearing all the content from the experts. And it's positively impacted our state testing scores. The benefits of co-teaching can be seen across the districts. And our intervention staff continues to focus on ways to make co-teaching effective and help it be successful in all settings. And if your student happens to be on a 504 plan, it's that time of year where 504 plans are being reviewed. 504 plans for middle and high school students were mailed to parents this month to be reviewed, signed and returned to the school. And plans for students in grades K to 4 will be mailed in December. Parents with questions or concerns about the child's 504 plan are encouraged to contact me, Angie Smith, at the school. Thank you. Do we have any Ford County reports?
Oh, yeah, a real brief one. Everything's going well over at Ford County. Tons of progress on the adult ed. They're continuing to grow. They're in Bryan and Malmie and Prometica over there in Defiance. But everything's just going really well. And lots of building improvements with the new expansion going on. And then they're fixing the old elevators and just general improvements around the area, so it's going well.
Alright, Mr. Countryman?
Yes, briefly. At first, I'd like to say it's great to be back. Thank you for allowing me to use my vacation days for the trip to Gillon I just went on. And also to my admin team for picking up the slack in my absence. I never once worried about anything, having that team here taking care of everything. The trip was amazing. We loved every bit of it, but it was too long. I know people don't usually say that, but halfway through, we said, somebody said something about it being a rough vacation, and I said, it's not a vacation. about it being a rough vacation and I said, it's not a vacation, it's an adventure because we saw so many things and walked so much every day, anywhere from three to seven miles a day and saw lots of stuff. So thank you for allowing me to do that. We also have a new bus driver who has completed training and is now eligible to sub-drive for us, so thankful to have Cecilia Waters joining our bus driver team as a sub-driver. And then Erin's taking his last superintendent class and I had to meet with his professor to line up some things on how he would do his internship and stuff with me this year. And it was great to have her come, but even greater to hear all the compliments that she already knew about our building and then commented on while she was here too. So as usual, we get a visitor and they always comment about how great our district is. And that's all I have. Thank you.
I wanted to say one thing about the veterans program. I had somebody approach me and they had said they had gone to another school's program and it was very nice, but ours definitely outshined by far.
Same.
So I thought I would pass that along. Totally unbiased. All right, so we'll start with financials. I need a motion.
I'll move. I'll second. Rushing. Don't interrupt, Erin.
So we have the minutes from the regular board meeting on October twenty-first, twenty twenty-four. The treasurer's consent agenda items, cash reconciliation as of October thirty-first, twenty-four, financial statements for October of twenty-four. Approve the amended official certificate of estimated resources for the fiscal year twenty-five as presented. A total of general fund resources of eighteen million, seven hundred and sixty thousand, one hundred and twenty-two dollars and forty-two cents. In total, resources for all funds of twenty-three million, five hundred and ninety-four dollars, ninety-four thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars and seventy-one cents. Approve fiscal year twenty-five permanent appropriations as presented. Total general fund appropriations of fourteen million, four hundred and fifty-three thousand, eight hundred and fourteen dollars and five cents. In total appropriations for all funds of seventeen thousand, seventeen million, eighty-six thousand, sixty dollars and two cents. Not the day to have a sore throat. Approve a memorandum of agreement for deposit of public funds with Premier Bank for the five-year period of January twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four through January twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-nine as presented. And approve the fiscal year twenty-twenty-five five-year forecast as presented. Cash balance as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-nine of six million, five hundred and sixty-six thousand, two hundred and forty-six dollars. And accept the following donations. Fifty dollars from King Arthur's LLC for high school principals' fund. Three hundred and fifty dollars from Hicksville Athletic Boosters for high school principals' fund. Five hundred dollars from Hicksville PTO for elementary principals' fund. Five hundred and eighty-two dollars from Lang Photog- Photographics for high school principals' fund. And five thousand from the Hicksville Athletic Boosters for the athletic department. Any discussion? I appreciate the notes that you did give us on that five-year forecast.
Yes.
It made sense. All of your notes did, so again, we appreciate your work on that. It's not the easiest thing to do.
Very understandable and also the- Oh, well, okay, thank you. I wanted to add a little bit more to it. The forecast generally looks pretty strong, but obviously it is just a forecast. It's the best projection based on information currently that I have and the vendor that helps me with has, et cetera. So property taxes, you know, we've had the big bump and that has kinda come. So it's the forecast itself going out is more flat-lined in that area. Our income tax, actually currently this year so far, was down slightly prior year, but I'm still hoping that we will at least break even this year. When I mean break even, at least that's what we had last year. I don't expect it to be much higher than that, but I have projected small increases in the next four years. So I hope that that comes true and even better, but we'll have to see. The unrestricted grants in aid, truly the state foundation. That's our biggest part of our funding. And in there right now, I have projected that the phase-in for the fair school funding plan will phase in years five and six. But that will be determined though by our state legislators that they do that. Of course, our annual budget ends at the end of June this year and there will be a new one starting July first. So the first one, first, second year were approved, the phase-in, the third, fourth year were approved, so we'll see about years five and six. This shows that, hopefully that happens. If it doesn't happen, it will probably be a negative impact on what we see in front of you. Also, this has the base cost data in here. Currently, right now, what we're using is base cost data from two thousand twenty-two. That had been four years old before they updated it. Will they update it here coming into the next budget or not? So this shows basically a two percent per year base cost data increase, and that's really based on inflationary costs associated with providing services in schools throughout the state. So salaries of teachers, salaries of administrators, stuff that's factored in for operating and all those things. So will that come to fruition? We'll have to, again, wait and see. The next line is where you see the biggest increases. That's the restricted grants in aid. And last year was five hundred and forty-four thousand, eight nineteen. This year projected to be a million, forty-seven, one thirty. That increase is almost entirely has to do with DPIA increasing, disadvantaged people impact paid. And that has increased because we went to the CEP program of which where we offer free meals to all students. So that has increased quite a bit all the way throughout the forecast. One thing that will happen with having free meals district-wide is the lunchroom itself will be operating in black, I meant in the red. It'll be operating red, so we will need to transfer money out of the general fund to keep the lunchroom full. Now that transfer is not as high. I projected two hundred and twenty-five thousand, two hundred and seventy-five thousand throughout the forecast per year. So it is less than approximately half of what the increase is in the DPIA. So we've got a positive with the DPIA. Some of that's gonna be drawn back because of the transfer, but it'll still be positive. So lines one point oh five oh, one point oh six oh. Not a whole lot of changing other than line one, one point oh six oh is interest income is been really good the last year, last couple of years, this last year. I believe this year should be as strong as it was last year, but interest rates are dropping. The Fed has dropped rates and we're gonna see, I think, in due time, our interest income is also gonna start to go down. So I have projected a ten percent per year increase in that. Again, that's hard to tell, but the Fed's can't tell you what they're gonna do tomorrow, but the state isn't one to tell you what's gonna happen in five years. So we'll see where that goes. It's true. Find crystal ball. Transfers in, a little bit farther down, that's for the buses. So it's actually moved in from one part of the general fund to the other part of the general fund. We could purchase a few buses this year and, but expecting purchases, one bus in two years from now and another bus two years later. So that is built in the forecast. Line three point oh one oh is personal services. The forecast, of course, we are in our last year of our current negotiated agreement and projected to probably go back to negotiations this spring. And the forecast itself has a base increase of two point five percent in there. So again, wherever that ends, it's gonna have a drastic impact. Wages is our largest line item on our expenditure, so any movement on that, whether it goes one way or the other, is gonna have a major impact on our bottom line. So and of course, where wages are impacted, the benefits is a pretty strong portion of that. And so SDRS, SDRS, it will automatically basically go up at the same percentage as wages. Purchase services, that's a line item, that's a big line item. A lot of the increase we've seen recently has to do with costs associated with ESC and just those costs are just getting more expensive. We have students that IUC, those costs have increased drastically. Hopefully that's at least topped out. Maybe, maybe things go well, we'll start to see it trickle back the other way. No promises there. The capital outlay line item this year, two thousand twenty-five, five hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. That is one of the bigger years, one of the biggest year on the whole forecast as far as that line item. That is because of the two buses we purchased. A van that has been ordered in which we will have outlay on that here probably within a month or two. I think the van's supposed to be here fairly soon. And then there's been some technology upgrades district-wide. A lot of it has to do with security related to our internet access and all that stuff. And that's some hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollar project. So that makes up the line share of that large item this year. And then it goes down the next year, a lot just kind of basic stuff that pops up throughout the years, then back up in the next year due to purchasing the bus, back down and back up. So anything else that does arrive, and you know, a lot of times something does, we pick on a bigger project that we're not talking about right now, but in year two or three because something needs to be placed or fixed or repaired or whatever, could possibly come out of the capital outlay line item. For example, a couple of years ago, we spent a lot of money that we got through the Esser monies for computer upgrades. Well, in about three years, we're gonna have to hit that again. How are we gonna fund it this next time? And that is a big, big ticket to be one-on-one throughout basically the entire district. So that is not built in here at this time. As we get a little closer, as we talk more about it, as we get more information, it will be in obviously a future forecast and that will impact things there too. The debt there, I don't know, I feel like I can start to see the line at the end of the tunnel. Three, four, five million dollars that we incurred to help build the athletic complex, the extra classrooms. We just made, right now, a year payment of five out of ten. So we're halfway there as far as paying that off. The final payment will be made in the school year of March, two thousand thirty. But what you see here on those line items, four point oh five five and four point oh six, once we get kind of beyond this forecast into the futures, that number will go away unless of course, unless we have additional debt. But that will start to disappear over time. Transfers out, again, I talked to the bus, transfers out to the bus and buses and the lunchroom. And that line item historically has been a lot less, but personal buses increase and the CEP program, there's pros and cons to that. Part of the con to it is the transfer out. And of course, the bottom line, we're looking to operate in the black for four or five years with a negative expenditure projected at this time for fiscal year two thousand So if anybody's got any additional questions, thoughts, insurance try to answer.
I was kinda surprised at the insurance. I was expecting it to have gone up more, so that was a nice-
Yes, our medical insurance, the consortium we're in, this area's in, medical insurance is just going up two percent effective January first of two thousand twenty-five. Dental's going up four. Dental's a lot smaller line item, so the impact's not as great. Vision actually went down, they changed the plan. Benefits are basically very similar to what they have been, but the cost went down. Again, that is a smaller line item too. Vision does not cost a whole lot compared to like medical. So medical is a huge line item, a two percent is incredible.
I've been here since I've been superintendent, I thought it'd been more.
Yeah.
But the forecast jumps back into more historic, closer to an eight percent in the next years. If hopefully we're lucky, hopefully things go well and we don't see eight percent. But we have seen that before and it's been higher, so there's been times where it's been double digits. And I've seen school districts, other districts have seen twenty, twenty-five percent increases in a year. Those could be really debilitating. So the program, our insurance program, a couple of years ago, three years or so ago, was really hurting. We had some pretty significant bumps there, probably along with decreased large uses throughout. I think what, a lot of what happened is during COVID, a lot of people moved back from getting a lot of services. Then when things got more back to normal, people really hit, had a lot of services done, increased the cost, and I think hopefully we're at a more normal cycle now.
Any other questions? Okay, roll call.
Okay. I'll see you with Galen.
Galen and Tyler.
Mr. Mathman?
Yes.
Mr. Levy?
Yes.
Mr. Vetter?
Yes.
And Mrs. Carrier?
Yes. Need another motion for employment of certified staff.
I'll move. I'll second.
Eric and Galen, thank you. Recommend to approve Kathy Laney as homebound tutor, a maximum of five hours per week at a rate of thirty-two, thirty-four per hour for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Recommend to approve the resignation of Kelly Van Horn as head junior high cross-country coach and head junior high girls track coach. Recommend to approve the following supplemental contracts for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Madeline Bragg, elementary student council advisor. Zach Holmeyer, color guard advisor, fifty percent. Recommend to approve the following as a volunteer for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Paul Payne, indoor track. Roll call.
Mr. Vetter?
Yes.
Mr. Mathman?
Yes.
Lonnie?
Yes.
And Mrs. Carrier?
Yes. Need another motion for classified staff.
I'll move. I'll second.
Recommend to approve the transfer of Pamela Slattery from elementary school secretary to superintendent secretary effective January first, twenty twenty-five. Recommend to approve the resignation of Trista Franklin as classroom aide effective December thirty-first, twenty-four. Recommend issuing a one-year limited contract to Trista Franklin as elementary secretary, elementary school secretary with zero years experience effective January first, twenty-five. Recommend to approve a hundred and fifty dollar per occurrence stipend to Johnny Adams and Eric Bassett for snow removal during non-school hours. Recommend to approve the following volunteers as twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Arlena Poloney, swim and dive coach. Pam Payne, indoor track. Madison Sevanour, indoor track.
And we would also want to add Chris Blue as a swim and dive coach as well, volunteer.
Where are they practicing?
Brian. Yeah. Chris Lawrence. Arlene, Arlene.
And then when you're ready, roll call.
Okay. Mr. Levy?
Yes.
Mr. Vetter?
Yes.
Mr. Mathman?
Yes.
And Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Need a motion for other business?
I'll move. I'll second. Mr. Mathman?
Yes.
And Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Need a motion for other business?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Eric and Galen. Recommend to approve the following new and revised Board of Education bylaws and policies, and there's a long list I'm not going to read.
Thank you.
And you can look at the agenda. We did want to comment though on six-two-two-zero. If you guys noticed when you were reading through that, that we have to choose an option and we are going with option, so this is regarding the cash balance reserve. So option two, correct?
Correct.
With ninety days, cash balance equivalent to at least ninety days of operating expense.
Yeah, unless the district goes below, anytime throughout the five-year forecast below ninety days, then it is signaled to start to implement plans to get it back above ninety days.
So we had two different options there in that policy and we had to choose.
That was sixty-two-twenty, right?
Correct.
Okay, all right.
Okay. Then recommend to approve the following athletic department issues for the twenty-four, twenty-five school district, involvement in indoor track, and improve participation in swimming and diving as an OHSAA sport.
That means they're in women's swimming?
That could be, but we only have one person involved.
Roll call.
Mr. Bader?
Yes.
Mr. Mathman?
Yes.
Mr. Levy?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Need a second motion or, I'm sorry, motion for other?
I'll move.
Tyler?
I'll move.
Galen. Okay. Recommend to approve January, and we need to discuss this, so we need to move our January meeting up. And if you guys are okay with it, we'll do January thirteenth. It would be one week early because we have to have it by the fifteenth.
Same time?
Yes. So January fifteenth at five-thirty.
Thirteen, thirteenth.
January thirteenth, thank you. Of twenty twenty-five at five-thirty as a date and time for the organizational meeting and to appoint, I appoint Steph Mazur. She knows and agreed. So we didn't do it without her knowledge as president pro ten.
It'd be kind of funny actually. Yeah, it would be. I'm all for it. What happens when you don't show up?
Right, yes, nobody objects.
Okay.
And so I need a roll call for that individually?
Mr. Levy?
Yes.
Mr. Mathman?
Yes.
Mr. Bader?
Yes.
And Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Okay. Any old business?
I think we're caught up. When's in, when, when are we doing the working session?
At the December meeting.
December meeting, okay, all right.
So under new business, Stephanie, I just wanted to go over Capitol Conference briefly. Steph and I had the opportunity to go down. I hate that it's always Veterans Day because we always miss the program. I would love to go to the program, but I'm down at Capitol Conference. And there were several things, it was a very good session, sessions I should say. One of the things that I went to was, it was supposed to be about curriculum, but it actually was more about the science of implementation. So it was one particular district and they were doing the new science of reading. And so they had got this new program and through the science of implementation, which I thought was really interesting, they said, I want to say at twenty years, they only had fourteen percent, wait a minute, I have it here. Okay, so implementation, implementation science, so not having an implementation team and just letting it happen, only fourteen percent of the sites were at full implementation in seventeen years, which shocked me versus an expert in implementation team and making it happen, they had eighty percent of sites were at full implementation in three years. And so they really talked about, especially in this school setting, how frequently like, oh, we have a new program and everybody's all excited and the teachers are like, well, we're not really behind it and we'll just wait for the change and we'll wait for the next one. And how they don't get the whole staff on implementing the new program and how much a district spend because they switch programs, because they didn't get buy-in and they didn't get everybody to implement it, so it was a waste of money and time. So they were really concentrated and it was just a lot of information of very specific strategic, how they implemented the program. And I just thought that was very timely considering we just spent a good deal of money on our own reading program and just how important that was. So I'm going to get that information to you. It was really, it was a good thing. Then another thing that came up numerous times was House Bill Eight, the Parents' Bill of Rights, which is really kind of scary. They talked a lot about it and they, there was quite a bit of talk that it would be passed in the lame duck session shortly, but it would require our, the staff to notify parents of any change in services or monitoring, monitoring in related to students' mental, emotional, physical health or well-being. And so at, on the top, it looks great, like, you know, parents should be informed, but the way they were talking was especially with school counselors, psychologists, principals, that anytime they talked to a student, that they would have to tell the student, I may need to notify your parents of this conversation every time. And they were like, you know, how does that work with patient confidentiality and just the impact of when students come, especially to schools, it's a safe place and sometimes they talk about things here that they want to talk about anywhere else and this is their safe place and how that impacts if that bill passes, what that would mean for all of our staff to be, have to say that to a student, to say, you know, I may have to tell your parent about this, was really kind of scary.
Does it mean that they absolutely have to though?
There was a lot of lawyers there. No, not really from.
It's a nice way of saying it's going to go that direction. And, you know, I can say it, there's no state people listening, but I wish they were. It's just another way of them sticking their nose in and making things difficult for people that are already doing it right.
Yes.
There, I do say that. Send that to Columbia.
There was, there was a lot of concern and there, and there was a lot of lawyers talking about it that, you know, that we would be required to tell the parents.
You'd be surprised Jen, how often that happens here where our principals or our counselors or the social worker is talking to students and to lose that comfort that the student may feel because we have to now contact the parent. I mean, obviously we would contact the parent if there was a threatening or like situation, but sometimes a kid just needs to talk to somebody that's not in the family.
Yeah.
And we're those people.
Yeah.
Well, one of the districts that I've been at, a lot of kids stuck around afterwards just outside and so forth.
Oh, yeah.
Around the buildings, in the building. And it was discussed, why are they still here? Schools have been out half an hour, forty-five minutes, an hour. They're not in sports, they're not in some extracurricular. And I kept hearing back, it's, they feel safer actually at school than some of these kids feel at home. So they stay at school.
Yeah. And then there was one more little caveat to it. It would also create criminal liability for certain teachers and librarians for the offense of pandering obscenity. And it would get rid of the exclusion of educational purposes in the books. So the books that we have in the library that we teach with, that we use, it would get rid of that and it would make it criminal, criminal for librarians to have the wrong book in the library. So if you think about like banned books and even over the history of time of banned books, I learned, I didn't know Where's Waldo was on the banned book list.
Charles Webber was at one point.
Yes. A lot of the classics were on the banned book list. And so, yes, they're, they're getting rid of that exclusion and there could be criminal liability for teachers and librarians. So that was all under the House Bill Eight. So.
Thinking the same thing, Keith.
Yeah. So feel free to call your legislator and tell them to mind their own business. My opinion, it was just, it was very interesting. I think that was it. Besides, again, so much STEM science, some awesome things going on down there. And I'm going to talk to you guys more about that in our work session. So that was it. So anybody else? We appreciate you coming and we are.
Did you have something, you wanted to, just here for, for, yeah.
Yeah, you missed the beginning, we're sorry. He did a great job. We appreciate him.
The pictures were awesome.
Yeah, great job. And so we are going to have our next scheduled meeting on Monday, December sixteenth at five-thirty, but before that we have, we'll be going into executive session, so I'll need a motion for that.
I'll move.
Galen. Eric. So let's say at six-forty and then we won't be taking any action afterwards. So roll call.
Mr. Mathman?
Yes.
Mr. Bader?
Yes.
Mr. Levy?
Yes.
And Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
All right.